Okay. Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Sparta Township Planning Board. Thank you to those joining us here and online. For the record, this meeting is being held on December 3rd, 2025 at 7:00 PM in the Sparta Township Municipal Building located at 65 Main Street, Sparta, New Jersey. And a live stream can be viewed on YouTube at www.youtube.com/spartatwp. Please note that adequate public notice of this meeting was given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. No new business is to be conducted after 9:30 PM and the meeting will end promptly at 10:00. Let us begin with a salute to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dory, would you please call the roll?
Jeanette Burke, Ernie Reichstadt.
Here.
Brian Zimmerman.
Here.
Ron Day.
Here.
Chairwoman Celeste Luciano.
Here.
Vice Chairman Robert Otto.
Here.
Councilman Mark Scott.
Yes.
Birgit Bogler.
Here.
Christine Dunbar, Joan Furman.
Here.
Okay. So before we begin tonight's proceedings, I'd like to apologize to those who either haven't seen or were unaware of the significant changes to our agenda. The presentation of the results for the master plan stakeholder meetings has been moved to our December 17th meeting and our thoughts and prayers are with our planner Lindsay Knight through this difficult time. One other significant agenda item to note is that the extension of time for PB number 2393 Larry and Tina Allen, 483 Glen Road, shows that it'll be carried to a meeting to be held on January 7th, 2026. I'd like to note that meeting may not be held as its contingent upon the reorganization meeting to be scheduled by the town council. Should that meeting not take place, PB 2393 will be carried to the first meeting of 2026.
Madam Chair, may I ask why it is being carried since they just asked for an extension of time?
Because there's going to be an additional conversation that's going to be happening under other board business that required for our professionals to not be present.
So it's because we don't have an attorney here tonight?
Not just an attorney, but the engineer and the applicant availability.
Okay, thank you.
And Resolution 2025-24 PB 25737, Sparta Holdings 11 and 13, Aaron Way is also carried to December 17th. That said, we now move into the approval of minutes, beginning with February 15th, 2023 eligible to vote are Jeanette Burke, Ron Day, Ernie Reichstadt, Celeste Luciano. Any discussion on these minutes?
Before we go into that, why is our attorney not here?
We can discuss that under other board business. So currently, we're at the approval-
We're here like as a board and we don't have an attorney. I understand Lindsay may have had an issue, but why are our other professionals not here?
Because I discussed the item that we're going to speak of under other board business with our attorney and he chose not to be present.
He chose not to?
Under his own advisement, he said that he would prefer to not.
Okay.
So, that having been said, February 15th, 2023, any discussion regarding these minutes?
I have questions about minutes in general. I know Ron put a lot, a lot, a lot, a lot, a lot of work into this.
He did.
You know, probably took quite a bit of time in making some of the corrections. I know I found some mistakes and issues in it. And I don't understand why we are getting half-baked minutes and it's a lot of work on our end to be doing these corrections. May I ask who is doing the minutes?
The minutes are being done by Emily in my office and I do not feel that they are half-baked at all. She did a very good job and put a lot of time into them. Ron did make quite a few recommendations for changes. A lot of them were quite simplistic as far as adding members that are present, adding members that are absent, and adding the professionals that were present in addition to some other information, but they really were not half-baked. They were overseen by myself as well and I went through them all. So if you do have any suggestions or recommendations for changes, I mean, we can start-
I do have some, but if, you know, if you're signing them, I would assume that you're reviewing them.
Of course I am.
And there are significant corrections to them. And I'd like to ask, if you are our board secretary, why are you not doing the minutes? Isn't that the role of a board secretary?
I'm not going to get into this with you this evening, Joan.
All right, then the next thing would be, we have paid for other people to be doing these minutes. Is that coming from a planning board budget or is that coming from a planning and zoning board budget?
You can talk to the township manager as far as payment of employees. That's not my, my position.
Okay.
Okay, can we please get back to any comments or questions regarding February 15th, 2023 minutes? Hearing none, are we ready for a vote? Motion in second, please.
A motion to accept the minutes of February 15th, 2023.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Ron Day.
Yes.
Ernie Reichstadt.
Yes.
And Celeste Luciano.
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to meeting minutes of June, I'm sorry, May 15th, 2024 eligible to vote, Ernie Reichstad, Christine Dunbar, Ron Day, Joan Furman, Jeanette Burke, Celeste Luciano, and Brian Zimmerman. Any questions or comments regarding these minutes?
So I've, I've got some comments and I appreciate Dory doing what you did. I'm not sure all, all the comments were addressed. Some may have been inadvertent, so let me just give you what I have here. On page one, let me just, you know, when I, when I look at minutes, a couple of things I look for is number one, what was the motion? Who made it? Who seconded it and what was the vote? And I think you saw a lot of my notes. So when I go down on page one to the 1, 2, 3, 4th paragraph on the bottom, it says draft an agreement and execute said agreement allowing and requiring the applicant. But it doesn't say that's what the motion was, so I think it's important to make that clarification. So I'd almost take that and the next sentence and just say a motion was made by Joe Furman to allow Mr. Brady to draft an agreement and keep the same words there. And that was then seconded by Mike Sylvester. So it's real clear that's the motion we're voting on. And that was not one, Dory, that I gave. I apologize on that one.
Well, that's okay. We can make that change.
And then on page two, the second line, a motion was made to approve the December 6 minutes was seconded, but it doesn't say who made the motion and who seconded. So I went back to the tape and saw the motion to approve was made by Ernie Reichstad and was seconded by Christine Dunbar, so if we can add that. And then go down 1, 2, 3 lines where it says motion was made to approve the December 20 minutes was seconded. Again, it doesn't say by who, so the motion was made by Michael Sylvester, seconded by Bill Emright, Bill Emright. And it was Dean Blumetti, it was as a board member. Dean Blumetti had two minor adjustments. And then under correspondence, there's really nothing there, so I think just for clarification that we didn't leave something out, just say, you know, there were none. And then the very bottom of that page, where it talks about the applicant's professional stated they are willing to deal with a reasonable condition of approval. I thought it was important, that was a statement that was made by their attorney, Mr. Chukowski. So I think that needs to, rather than just the applicant, Mr. Chukowski, the applicant's attorney, reiterate that the applicant's professional stated they are willing to deal with reasonable conditions of approval. So people know where that came from. And then I'm gonna jump to page four. And this again goes back to naming. So under resolutions, the second one, motion to approve the resolution was made by unknown board member and was seconded by unknown board member. So I'd like to have that to say the resolution was made by Ernie Reichstad and was seconded by Celeste Luciano, and I got that from watching the video. Then I want to go down 1, 2, 3 more. Again, motion to approve the resolution was made by unknown board member and was seconded by unknown board member. I, just going forward, if we see that, I'd like to, I mean, the tape, the videos here, if we can put names in there, I think that's important.
So I think what happened was the wrong set got put into this packet because I was here last night and I stayed until probably about, I emailed you when I got-
Yeah, this is why, this is why I got off the email.
I had made all these changes. I think the wrong one got put in your packet.
Do you have a current-
The one that went out to you in the email was the accurate one.
That's, that's what I thought I was looking at.
The wrong one went in the email, in this packet here. All those were changed. They were all changed.
All right, so I'd like to have the chance to just to look at that.
Of course.
So can we put this one aside for now? And I'll look at that if we take a break before we go.
Yeah, again, those are all the ones that were sent out in the email.
All right, so if we can table May, what's that, May 15th? That'd be appreciated.
Okay.
Thank you for all your work in, in doing this.
Moving forward to June 19th, 2024 eligible to vote, Ernie Reichstad, Chris Dunbar, Ron Day, Joan Furman, Jeanette Burke, Celeste Luciano, Brian Zimmerman. Questions, comments?
Couple of comments. In terms of those that were present under the others, which are our professionals, Dave Brady, our conflict attorney was here and so was Catherine Samara, our planner, so I think that should be added to the list. And then going down to the second from the bottom, Les Holdings attorney was Chukowski, not Shassy.
Yeah, again, I think you got the wrong set and what was sent in an email yesterday was all corrected because I see here that Mr. Burton's name is spelled incorrectly. There's, there's a number, our engineer, Robert McInerney, that was all changed. So this is again, the wrong set that was in the packet for this evening, on the day.
I've got only a few here, so if people agree to that, I think we don't have to set this one aside, we can just vote based on these changes if people are okay with it. And that way we can just keep moving. Page four, and this may have been changed too. Ms. Furman made a motion to approve an unknown board member seconded the motion. The un, so I want to be clear on the motion here. So the motion was, was subject, was Mrs. Furman made a motion subject to the conditions cited by Mr. Collins. It wasn't to approve the application submitted, it was conditional. So, and that was Christine Dunbar that seconded. I think that's it for this, this set.
So if there are unknown members, somebody should be going back and checking that rather than just giving us minutes that say unknown members.
Like I just said, last night I was here until 6:30 and I changed all of that, so-
Then, then maybe it waits till, because we spend a lot of time, at least Ron does, I know a lot of other, of us do, spending a lot of time going over this and then doing it a second time and a third time, so.
So then maybe it would be best that we just wait until the meeting so that all the changes get done at the meeting and on the record so that there aren't five emails-
But there were too many, too many changes. I think they need to be reviewed by you to make sure that there are no unknowns and-
Okay.
That we do it correctly.
We understand the process, thank you.
So if people are okay with those changes, I make a motion to approve subject to those changes?
We have a second.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
You have to give me a minute because I just got my paperwork discombobulated. Ernie Reichstad?
Yes.
Ron Day?
Yes.
Joan Furman?
Yes.
Celeste Luciano?
Yes.
And Brian Zimmerman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving forward to August 21st, 2024.
We do not have a meeting on August 21st.
You should check, I, I would, I'm, I missed that too.
It was August 20th.
20th?
Double check the date.
Sure.
While you guys are checking that, Dory, I got a question. The headphones in front of us, do you know, I'm hearing-
That's the courts. I don't, I don't, I don't know anything about it.
No.
You're the judge.
You were? Oh, you're like hearing a delay.
It's Wednesday.
Thank you.
It was the 21st.
Yeah, so August 21st, 2024 was a Wednesday.
I think the judge was, I'm gonna make it easier.
I'm sorry, I thought, I apologize, I was thinking, it was August 20th, 2025. So August 21st, 2024, okay.
Yes, August 21st, 2024, meeting minutes. Any questions or comments now that we've corrected, now that we understand that it was the 21st?
Again, I apologize, I got, I got a few.
Not a problem.
So going to page three, again, the motion to approve, was a motion to approve an application subject to the conditions cited by Mr. Brady, and I think that's important to put the minutes that wasn't a blanket approval. And it was, let me see, it was, the motion was made by Michael Sylvester, so if we can make that.
Ron, can you just tell me where you are and which page?
Yeah, I'm sorry, so page three, the third line.
Okay.
Chairman Ron Day states there is a motion and it should say by Michael Sylvester.
Yeah, again, you got the wrong, I apologize, I don't know how this happened, but this was all changed and it was in the email that I sent everybody last night with all the corrections.
We, we understand, so let's just get the changes that, that are on record, let's just get those changes on record.
Well, there's gonna be a lot moving forward then because Ron had quite a bit.
Well, let me pull up the email, maybe, maybe, maybe that's a better way to do it.
Yeah.
I can take a quick look. Can I make a suggestion to, so we don't slow things down, Chairwoman? There's a couple that, I've got abstained 6, 4, 25 and 9, 3, 25. Do you want to do those, you want to take everything and turn? If you do those, well, I abstain, I can look at some of these.
No, no.
Or we can just go through the things.
No, I mean, the idea is to go through them.
Okay, let's do it.
Yeah, I have no issues with that.
I was actually not present at this meeting.
What's that?
I was not present at this meeting.
On August 21st?
The 21st.
August 21st, so not up to it.
The roll call, during the roll call, there was an issue where Justin Cannell's vote, because he was an altered, was, was taken out. We had to do the vote a couple of times, but the final vote did not include him as somebody's who voted count. So the vote was 6, 2, 1, 6, you know, 6 in favor of. So, so he should be removed. And then just under the application, the one thing that was missing here was the, the name of the attorney that was representing JP, JP V Ventures, which was Daniel Burkendorf of Askins. So you might want to just mention that, you know, he was the attorney of record. And then going down to the bottom, the motion was made by Ernie Reichstad to approve an unknown applica, an unknown board member, you've probably got this already. But again, this was, was to approve the application subject to the conditions cited by Mr. Brady. And Celeste, I think you seconded that one.
I believe I did.
That's all I have. I don't know if anyone else has any other questions or comments? I'll make a motion to approve subject to those, to the comments.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Ernie Reichstad?
Yes.
Ron Day?
Yes.
Joan Furman?
Yes.
Celeste Luciano?
Yes.
Okay, moving forward to December 4th, 2024 eligible to vote, Ernie Reichstad, Chris Dunbar, Ron Day, Joan Furman, Jeanette Burke, Celeste Luciano, Brian Zimmerman. Questions, comments?
I have a change there for just, for the MSPS update. If you would indicate that it was Bill Emright that was speaking.
I'm sorry, which page are you on?
I wrote these notes, I didn't write the page.
Oh, okay.
But it's the Minor Site Plan Subcommittee Update and it was Bill Emright who was speaking.
So MSPS update is actually on page four for anybody who wants to follow.
Right, it says, thanks Ms. Furman, Ms. Dunbar, Raisha, we approved three applications from what we, from when we met last, but that was, but there's no indication of who was saying that, so that was Bill Emright.
Anything else for these minutes?
I have no comment.
Anyone else? Okay. I have a motion in a second, please.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Ernie Reichstad?
Yes.
Ron Day?
Yes.
Joan Furman?
Yes.
Celeste Luciano?
Yes.
And Brian Zimmerman?
Yes.
Okay, moving forward to, what was that? That was December 4th?
June 4th.
And, June 4th, 2025. Pardon me one second, I think I may have gotten my paperwork. Which I still did. Okay, so June 4th, 2025 eligible to vote, Ernie Reichstad, Councilman Mark Scott, Celeste Luciano, Brian Zimmerman, Christine Dunbar, Rob Otto, Joan Furman. Questions, comments? Hearing none, may I have a motion in a second, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Ernie Reichstad?
Yes.
Councilman Mark Scott?
Yes.
Celeste Luciano?
Yes.
Brian Zimmerman?
Yes.
Robert Otto?
Yes.
And Joan Furman?
Yes.
Moving forward to minutes of August 20th, 2025. Questions, comments? Oh, sorry, eligible to vote, Jeanette Burke, Ernie Reichstad, Brian Zimmerman, Ron Day, Joan Furman, Councilman Mark Scott, Birgit Bogler, Rob Otto and Celeste Luciano.
I have comments. We had a 25-minute discussion, 25 minutes, and it is not reflected here. And if we are going to put forth minutes, they should reflect what was done in the meeting. And it just says that on page one, Brian Zimmerman made a motion to vacate the current chair, blah, blah, blah. Jeanette Burke seconded it and there's like nothing about the 25 minutes of discussion and there were some very important things that were said that I know I personally put on the record and they are not on the record. I would like to table this until such time as these minutes can be corrected to put the proper information in here that was on the record.
I make a motion to table the-
Second.
I, I'm happy to do that. Is there something specific that, that you-
Oh, there's a lot of stuff, there's a lot, there's so much missing in 25 minutes. There was absolutely no discussion and no response as to what this was all about.
Okay, so I'm just gonna note this too.
Or is it indicated on here, what?
Oh, it's not indicated, that's the problem.
Bottom of the first page.
Bottom of page one.
That, that law, that second to last paragraph before moving on, Mr. Brian Zimmerman made a motion to vacate current chair. So Joan is, is, is referring to, to the discussion that happened surrounding that, that motion?
Yeah.
There's a lot of information that was presented that is not recorded.
Minutes are minutes, they're not the full record, but I, I think-
25 minutes is the significant portion.
More should be in here as far as like the, the highlights of it.
Correct.
That's what the idea of the minutes is, is doesn't have to go into the minutia of it, but it, it should, there, there probably should be about 10 lines, at least 10 lines in there reflecting a summary of it. I agree. So table it till we get them in there.
To be added.
And that would be my same comments for September 3rd. It just says we had an argument and I don't think that's the right way to reflect what has, had occurred.
Okay, so we're going to-
September 3rd.
Hold, August 30, oh, sorry, August 20. Right, so let's, for the record, let's just, there was a motion in a second to, to table these minutes, so let's just go through the roll call for the record, please.
Ernie Reichstad?
Yes.
Brian Zimmerman?
Yes.
Ron Day?
Yes.
Joan Furman?
Yes.
Councilman Mark Scott?
Yes.
Birgit Bogler?
Yes.
Rob Otto?
Yes.
Celeste Luciano?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so September 3rd, 2025.
All right, it's the same comment that I have, that there was quite a bit of discussion and it just says that we argued and I don't think that's a fair representation of what happened. So I'd like that to be a little more detailed. So I would make a motion to table that.
Okay, so that's first.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
So Ernie Reichstad?
Yes.
Brian Zimmerman?
Yes.
Joan Furman?
Yes.
Councilman Mark Scott?
Yes.
Uh, Birgit Bogler?
Yes.
Rob Otto?
Yes.
Celeste Luciano?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to September 17th, 2025 eligible to vote, Brian Zimmerman, Jeanette Burke, Ernie Reichstad, Robert Otto, Celeste Luciano, Birgit Bogler, Ron Day, Mark, excuse me, Councilman Mark Scott and Joan Furman.
I have some corrections there as well. It says Sparta Holdings was carried to October 1st, 2025, but that was not Sparta Holdings. The board did hear the Sparta Holdings applications on that date, so I'm not exactly sure what was carried. I didn't think it was up to me to go back and to listen to another YouTube to try to figure that out. But, you know, when you have two in a row, one saying it's carried and one saying you heard it, it's pretty obvious. Does anybody remember what was, was carried? It might have been Mediterranean Restaurant.
That was the Mediterranean Restaurant.
And the Sparta Smoke Shop.
It just, the, the heading just needs to be changed to the-
And, and not only the heading, but the number of the-
Page one?
On what page?
Page one at the bottom.
Are we talking about Sparta Smoke Shop and Mediterranean Cuisine?
Right.
Where it says carried from and then-
You've got the update.
Yeah, no, this is, I think that they're looking at older minutes because on mine it's correct.
And I know you sent some stuff out this afternoon.
That's what I'm saying, that, that a lot of, what you have right here in front of you is not what I sent out to everybody last night.
Well-
For whatever reason.
That's a problem though, and we, we, we said this at a previous meeting and previous-
You sent out in an email last night.
We can't, we can't look at minutes two, three times.
We, we unders, we understand what the situation is.
We got them done.
We understand what the situation is.
Before it was less than-
Ms. Fox, we understand what the situation is. We get it, we get it. So please, instead of continuing the argument, let's get the change. There's no need to defend yourself in this session, right? We can, we can do that at a, at a different time.
We just need to get it right.
Correct. Right now, we just need to get it on the record.
A judge or a court or a jury, it's gotta be right.
And once it's on the record, then we can decide whether or not we're going to move forward with it, table it, or what. We've gotten through-
So what would we like to do with this one? Are we going to table it?
I, that's, that's up to the board to decide currently. So.
One of the other issues I have is when we make these changes, we never see the corrections later on. So we say, all right, we're going to vote on this based on these changes, but we never see the changes that were made.
I gave you all the changes.
No, I'm talking about anything in the past. And today, you know, it's like so confusing to look at something and say, well, now look at Ron's changes and look at this and then which ones, you know, you do it a day before, then you're doing it the next day and the next day.
Just don't give me changes before, we'll do it at the meeting and it gets on the record and then you'll have to carry it.
But we would ask that you would review these before it comes to us.
I review them, I review all of them.
Okay, enough. We understand the issues, we understand what we're dealing with. Right now, we're either gonna table it, we're not going to table it, or we're gonna discuss it.
Can I suggest that we table this one because I, I had some comments and they may have been addressed.
But we don't know.
I know some stuff and I apologize, Dory, you sent some stuff out this afternoon that I didn't get a chance to, to read through. And they may have been in there.
You're on.
So I'd like to be able to look at this one, but I would like to table it. So I make a motion to table this.
I'll second.
Brian Zimmerman?
Yes.
Ernie Reigstad?
Yes.
Robert Otto?
Yes.
Celeste Luciano?
Yes.
Birgit Bogler?
Yes.
Ron Day?
Yes.
Mark Scott?
Yes.
Furman?
Yes.
Moving forward to minutes of meeting for October 1st, 2025.
I have some corrections there.
Eligible to vote Jeanette Burke, Ernie Ragstad, Ron Day, Celeste Luciano, Rob Otto, Birgit Bogler, Christine Dunbar, and Joan Furman. Ms. Furman, you were saying?
Yes, it states that Mark Scott was absent, yet the minutes indicate that he voted for the July 16th minutes. So if he wasn't here, he couldn't have voted on them.
Okay, I'm sorry, you were saying that's approval of minutes on page one under July 16th? Is that where you're referring?
Let me find July 16th.
Okay, I know, I just want to make sure that I'm on the same spot where you are. Okay. Um, I have, um, not July 16th, what was the date?
September, no.
I think it's October 1st.
October 1st, I'm sorry, October 1st.
These are the October 1st minutes, but you had mentioned the July 16th minutes.
I'm sorry, October, it's, it's all very confusing. October 1st, it states members absent Brian Zimmerman, Councilman Mark Scott. When you go further to approval of minutes for July 16th, and you do the roll call, it says Mark Scott, yes, but he was not present.
Correct, that's, that's where I was
So that's what needs to be corrected.
So we're on the same page.
Doesn't have them in the approval of June 7th, just the
No, just in the other one.
Correct, just on that one.
So if you'd make that correction, then I wouldn't have an issue, and I would vote to approve these minutes unless anybody else has comments.
I have a comment. But this might have been, I might have read an email version where it was changed, Dory. So this might be different. Page six, when Birgit brought up about how she was left outside the locked town hall, and she didn't receive the notice that Minor Site Plan Subcommittee Meeting was canceled, which was sent via email. So I did see a version of this story, and I don't know, maybe, I think I saw a version that had a line that said, "An email went out, 431." And so I just want it recorded in the, the minutes that I communicate with members. Sometimes it's according to the schedules of, you know, I'm organizing a bunch of people to meet. So sometimes it may be later in the afternoon than I'd like, but even, even today, we canceled. But there was a line in there about, you know, that, that I had put out an email that, that was responded to by the office, 431, saying, "We've canceled because we don't have a quorum." So just want that reflected. But again, I think I saw a version of this where it was, so that might have been like an email version, the hell of more, more information than this page six. Anyway.
So if we change the wording a little bit, and I don't want to speak for Birgit, she can try, chime in, but express frustration that she did not see the email cancellation?
That's, I mean, yeah, because
And approve this?
That's fine, it's just, I, I think there was a line, and it was specific to this 431. I mean, Raisha had responded to it in the office, so everyone should have been in receipt of it. But I understand Birgit was new to Minor Site Plan and thought that maybe I would call everyone, which just isn't
Can I make a suggestion there, too? So this is, for, for this set of minutes, this is the one area that got my attention is, you know, if the paragraph above, I'm on page six, paragraph above the key points, it got some bolded areas. I don't know if that was done intentionally or not, but I don't think we want to call, make this the, the most important thing of these minutes, so just, just a regular font. But what I'd recommend for the, for the, for the discussion is use the first bullet and the last bullet. And all that stuff in between is, I don't believe belongs in, in the minutes.
Where do you have bullets? I don't see bullets.
About key points, this is about Minor Site Plan, Ron, too.
Yes.
The prior topic, where I was kind of just like, come on, come on.
Where do you, I, we don't have bullets.
Right here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, about
Page six, key points.
Page six, near the top.
Yeah, so I don't have the new, the new, okay. Yeah, so I would just say, let's, let's summarize, is that just too much data for this discussion?
Yeah.
You know, just, no, Birgit had, she had frustration, she expressed it, and it ended with, you know, they're gonna discuss it, resolve it at the next up committee meeting. So it's on the record, and the resolution's on the record, but let's not put all the he said, she said
But, but, no, 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 but Ron, are you talking about the key points above that, where I was, that was a totally different topic? It was Minor Site Plan, but it was just kind of a general obs, come on. It was a general observation about kind of lessons learned, you know, Minor Site Plan since getting on there. I just want to make sure you know that.
Right here, Ron.
Okay, yep.
And like down here, can you see?
There were two separate points. I don't mind being less verbose, I'm just, I just want to make sure we're, they're two different topics. Birgit was not responding to my points, and she was just responding to the fact that she wasn't aware that there was a
Dory, can we just take out the entire paragraph that says Birgit Bogler expressed frustration that she wasn't informed about the cancellation of a Minor Site Plan Subcommittee Meeting? It was a, and just take that sentence out and just say, leave the conversation centered on a mis, on a miscommunication, and it was agreed that this matter should be discussed and resolved at the next meeting, to prove it. Okay?
Okay. Thank you.
I also have some other edits.
Okay.
On page four, towards the bottom, I need to be added into the roll call. So Joan Furman made a motion to approve the smoke shop, and then if you go down, it says roll call.
Yeah.
But my yes vote is not in there.
Good catch.
Also, on the next page, page five, the same issue under the Capital Improvement Plan, my name needs to be added to the roll call as a yes vote. And then the same also for TQP, my name needs to be added to the roll call as a yes vote.
And you did second that one, correct? The Capital Improvement Plan?
I did.
Okay. And then what was the third one?
The Woodport Road, the TQP one.
Okay.
My, my vote under roll call.
And that was a yes?
Yes.
Thank you. So then the changes would be for the July 16th minutes that Mark Scott was absent, so he did not vote on that. And then it would be
Then moving to page four.
That Birgit on page four did vote for the smoke shop. On page five, she voted for the Capital Improvement Plan with a yes. For TQP services, it was also with a yes. And that we are eliminating that last, that paragraph in the middle of page six that it centered on miscommunication in it. Okay.
And then
And adding the sentence that a meeting cancellation email had been sent out by Rob Otto.
Thanks.
Was there a motion?
Not yet. Is everyone okay with these changes? Is there anything else that we need to add or amend? Okay, so now we're looking for a motion in a second? For approval.
I'll make the motion.
And I'll second.
Ernie Reigstad?
Yes.
Ron Day?
Yes.
Celeste Luciano? Rob Otto?
Yes.
Birgit Bogler?
Yes.
And Joan Furman?
Yes.
All right. And moving on to November 5th, 2025, eligible to vote Jeanette Burke, Ernie Ragstad, Brian Zimmerman, Ron Day, Celeste Luciano, Mark Scott, Birgit Bogler, and Christine Dunbar. Questions, comments?
I have none.
Any? No? I have a motion in a second to approve.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Ernie Reigstad?
Yes.
Brian Zimmerman?
Yes.
Ron Day?
Yes.
Celeste Luciano?
Yes.
Mark Scott?
Yes.
Birgit Bogler?
Yes.
Okay, so for the record, we've held and carried the minutes for May 15th, 2024, August 20th, 2025, September 3rd, 2025, and September 17th, 2025. They'll be revisited hopefully at our next meeting. So we're going to move on to other board business. And at this stage, the item that needs to be addressed is the announcement for the Fair and Open Process that was made at our first meeting in November regarding our planner and our attorney. Now, I need to preface something with, by stating what fair and open is, and what, and how these processes work. An RFP is a request for proposal, and this is for, for the public's consumption and understanding. The request for proposal can be provided to the board in three ways. One is the non-fair and open way, and that is when a board goes to specific professionals, asks them for their criteria, for their pricing, and their public service agreement. Without any notice, they're going to people very specifically to, to get this information. If they get more than one, then they compare those and, and make their decisions. But usually, this happens when, when professionals are being renewed from year to year. It, it facilitates that process. The fair and open process is a process that is transparent. It's noticed, the information that's required or being received is the same information that you would receive in the non-fair and open process, which is, again, the, the qualifications, pricing, publics, excuse me, professional service agreement. And, but the difference is the transparency, because it's noticed, it's advertised, it's put usually in various publications, it's also published on the New Jersey League of Municipalities and on the municipality website. The third method of acquiring an RFP is a, is a closed contract or a I think it's conservative contract, the QPA had given me specific terminology, I apologize. But this particular type of contract is where there are certain specifications that you're looking for. This is a rigorous process, because you're citing specific specifications. When the documentation comes in, you're not just qualifying it in terms of the, the, you know, normal course of whether or not price is there, and, and agreements there, and, you know, their general qualifications match. You're also going through a second round of, of review, where you're making sure that the criteria that they've provided meets the specifications that you've put out there for, for the, the Jaber Project. That's the process that we went through in 2023, where we were looking for qualified people to help us move through master plan projects, help us move through certain litigations, so on and so forth, right? So the 2023 process was very different than the process that we were looking to move through now, which was very simply based on the announcement that I made, fair and open, which allows anyone who is interested in, in the position to provide us with their qualifications, their resume, and their, their service agreement and their pricing. So that having been said, this in no way, at any point, is a detriment or a mark against our current professionals. Our current professionals have provided us a level of service. This is not relative or germane to the services they have provided. The thought process for the fair and open was based on the unfortunate circumstances that occurred in January, that brought us from January through March, where we were notified that a professional, our professional attorney, who was supposed to join us, who at the time was Steve Werner, was not going to be our attorney. Then we had to move to Rich Aller, because, you know, he was the only one who was available to take us. Then we unfortunately had to, to kind of scramble to, to get additional information, which put us in a position where we had to hire Ken Poro without having been capable of, of vetting through the process. And if we had a repository of individuals that we could have looked at, could have opined on, could have agreed to, then maybe all of that scrambling wouldn't have happened. And not saying that Ken wouldn't have been, wouldn't have been hired regardless. Likely, he would have qualified and has done well for us over the course of the year. But in order to remedy these situations, we need to be capable of having a repository of individuals to be capable of going back to. The unfortunate circumstance, we had a similar situation with our planner. When our planner was, was offered a, a temporary terms contract, and she declined, we were again put in a position where we, we needed to kind of scramble. Luckily, we were fortunate enough to have already been doing business with Neglia, and Lindsay came to us through that, through that process. So that having been said, and all of that history being given, I'd like to have the discussion now in, in open session regarding the fair and open process and people's opinions regarding fair and open process. I'd also like to point out that I did send out an email to all members of the board, and I did get a, a good number back regarding responses. Most people seem to be fine with, with a fair and open. But for the purposes of this discussion, what I'd like to do, in order to keep it fair and orderly, is to kind of go down the line, let each individual say what they want to say, have their opinion put out there. And then if there are any questions that you'd like to ask the person who's speaking, give the board the opportunity to ask questions. Once those questions are answered, we'll move to the next person. Does that sound fair and reasonable? Okay, great. So let's, not to put you on the spot, Brian, but let's start at your end of the dais.
Yeah, I thought we could even do like pros and cons here.
Absolutely. But again, I, I would like to state that one of the reasons why professionals are not here is because this conversation, unfortunately for them, was, was deemed uncomfortable as opposed to Lindsay, who, who had a, a personal issue. And, and this gives us the freedom to have this conversation with each other without their discomfort. And if we have an issue regarding current professionals, it's okay to say that you have an issue, but please keep the specifics to yourself. They are not here to question or to defend themselves. So I, I'd like to kind of keep that.
That's fair, but before we begin, I'd just like a point of order. The Open Public Meetings Act, if something is not on the agenda, it may be discussed but not voted on. So we're very open to discussing, but there is no vote today.
Absolutely, this was, this was based on discussion. This was not because there was, there was an issue regarding whether or not this should be discussed at length. And unfortunately, at that last meeting, we were already running late, we didn't have the opportunity for discussion. So I'd like to give us the opportunity now. So Brian, if you wouldn't mind?
Well, so when it comes to, I'm gonna start with Ken. Let's say hypothetically, we were to, to move away from
Can you bring your microphone down, please?
Say we were, we were to move away from Ken. I do have a concern about how that might look for, you know, the elephant in the room we're not really allowed to talk about. Do you know what I'm talking about?
Yes. For litigation purposes.
Yeah. You know, what are the optics on that? How does, you know, what does that look like if we're flip-flopping? So that's one, one thing that, you know, I've thought about that in depth. I would love to hear people's opinions on it, too, about
Oh, we can't, we can't go into
No, not details on that, but just, you know, if you think the, kind of the way my, I'm thinking about how that might appear on the outside.
Can we talk about that in executive session?
We can't hold executive session, we don't have an attorney.
We, oh, okay. So, well
So, so that's just one part. We can continue, let me
Right, let's, let's let Brian get the rest of his opinion out, and then if we have questions, we'll, we'll ask.
Yeah, because, you know, part of me is a little bit on the fence about this. And then the other part with Lindsay is, again, this is another, you know, hypothetical situation. She's handling master plan right now, and I know she has a contract there. But let's say we decide to move away from her here. Could she get up and say, well, I'm not doing a master plan anymore?
Well, there's, any contract that we have has a 30-day termination clause either direction. So the conversation that, that was originally had with Lindsay, when this conversation was had, then I, and it was brought to bear that there would be no bearing on the contract for the master plan, that that would be solid regardless of what she chose to do. And now understand that when this conversation was had with those professionals, they were invited, you know, obviously, because we, we want, we, we welcome that. That's, that's the, the idea was that when the concern was put out there about how things went down in January, that we be capable of, if, you know, the choice being Ken and, and Lindsay, that everyone be capable of being comfortable with that choice, as opposed to saying, well, there's a 30-day termination clause if we don't like them. But that, that didn't really, didn't really put us in that position.
She might not say, hey, you know what?
She didn't give me any indication that she would.
So, but that's, I'm just leaving that as potentially something that could happen. And then, you know, what does that affect on master plan as well? You know, she already put so much work and effort into it. So those are basically my two
I, I understand, because we had a similar situation when, when Catherine got I, I understand, cuz we had a similar situation when, when Catherine got replaced. So it's, it's, um, you know, I, I hear what you're saying.
And then just how it is, you know, I mean, I understand other municipalities flip, uh, actually more so than we did, because I don't think anyone.
Brian, it's not really.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Uh, from what I know, most people in the state of New Jersey have never had a 40 year tenure, um, and Sparta is unique in, in that historically. So, those are just some of my thoughts.
Okay, so now with regard to the fair and open process and, and if we were to, to, to do this, um, are, is the fair and open process as opposed to the other types of processes, is that palatable to you?
I would prefer it, but you know, what is, I guess I don't fully understand what the fair and open entails because you still have to onboard people as well.
Well, the, the, the. Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah. You, you can do, I mean, basically all you're doing is saying, you know, we want to see who else out there wants to.
Yeah.
Uh, to represent the, the Sparta Township Planning Board. We'll get a bunch of resumes in, we may say, you know what? We're, we're good with who we have. Or, oh, you know what, this, I think this person more aligns with our, with us and, and, and then we'd, um, if we wanted to go that direction, we'd, we'd make that decision. But, you know, again, the last time we went through this process before, uh, we ended up, we got, we got a number of people in, um, and we stayed with our professionals. You know, so I mean, it, it, um.
My only concern is maybe burning ourselves somehow, and I don't want to go down that road, so. I just want to be assured that that's not something that could potentially happen.
How many people applied so far?
I don't know. Well, it had to be taken down because the notice was defective.
Could we, uh, just go through the process?
We're gonna go down the.
Ernie, I'm, I'm good.
All right.
So does anybody have any questions of Brian based on his, his opinions and thoughts?
Where are the discussions had, here at the dais or in executive session?
Discussions for?
Reviewing all of the applicants.
Okay, so that's questions, that's a question for Brian and his opinion?
Oh.
I don't think he.
I would think they would be in executive session.
Yeah.
Right, but he, so you're not clear about where the discussion is had and I, okay. So we need to, I think, understand more clearly, at least.
Yeah, I think this right now is just a sounding board.
Right. Correct, that's, that's where we are.
What is the actual process? People come in with, with a packet, by a deadline, in response to an RFP, and then what happens?
Okay, so to, you're right. So, so basically, once the RFP packet comes in, right, during the period that, um, that it's open, right, if we're doing fair and open as opposed to, uh, non-fair and open, that period of time, or if you're doing the competitive contract, the packets come in and they go to the QPA, right, the Qualified Purchasing Agent. She holds them, that's Christie Rehe. She hangs on to those packets until the window closes. When that window closes, she goes through those packets, makes sure that they meet the specifications, you know, the, the basics, which is for fair and open, or the, um, these, you know, uh, more rigorous specifications, those weighted measurements, if it's a competitive contract. If they meet all of those requirements, they get moved forward in the process, they get provided to the board, the board reviews all of the data and looks at their qualifications to become familiar with them. Um, we actually, when we went through competitive contracts, brought people in for interview so that we could, we, you know, we could talk to them, give them our questions, see whether or not we felt they were qualified. And then, uh, usually, generally, as a rule at reorganization, you, the board votes on who they want. But the discussions for contracts happen in executive session.
And that would be by the new board in January.
Any, any vote for, um, yeah, that would be under, under normal circumstances, that, yes.
So why are we doing this now? Because last year when I brought it up at this time, I was told two things. Number one, it's very expensive. And number two, you're gonna get a brand new board, let them decide what they want to do. So why are we doing this almost like as a lame duck session in trying to push this process forward before we know who the new board is and how they're going to?
The idea of doing it now would be so that there was a repository of, of applicants that could be looked at and reviewed at the point that things are available. Now, understand that we don't want to be put in a position that we were in, in January, whereas the professional that was appointed was not there for reorg, right? And so the professional that was being removed had to not only sit through that meeting, but, you know, have to deal with an uncomfortable experience. So you'd like the professional. Well, no, I mean, because that's the thing, if you have the ability to go through this process, then by the time you get to reorg, you have a generally good idea.
But you don't know who's going to be appointed by town council to the new board.
After their reorg, you do.
Right, which is when? Mark, do you know when the reorg is?
Mark, would you mind bringing your microphone down, please?
I think typically it's the first week in January.
Yeah.
First Tuesday?
I don't know what day just.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure.
The sixth, and we're supposed to meet the seventh, so really there is no time because we won't even know till the sixth.
Well.
So maybe we need to change our meeting, our first meeting, till a little bit later.
Which is typical of what happens. Typically what happens is we don't have it the first Wednesday of, of the year. We have it the second Wednesday of the year to give the council time to make their decisions, then to give the board time to make their decisions.
So maybe that's something we need to notice now, that, you know, that date.
Likely, likely. But, okay, so if we have no more questions of Brian, let's.
Well, I just, as we're going around, because we're gonna hear from everybody, and you just asked about Ken and Lindsay. But this board decides on four professionals. They decide on the attorney, the planner, the engineer, and the secretary. So my question is, why are we only focusing on two of the professionals? If we're going to do this and it is fair and transparent, why are we not focusing and opening it up? And I'm willing to vote, you know, for, you know, let's go out to bid, fair and transparent, but let's vote on all four. And so as we're going around, I want to hear about all four, not just done two.
When we get to you, please expand on that further.
I don't want to be the last one, I want to hear from everybody about all four.
Okay. And, and when we're ready to ask questions, we can, we can certainly, we can certainly do that. But right now, we're talking about the fair and open process in and of itself. So, Ernie, if you wouldn't mind?
Yeah.
Well, I have another thing for Brian.
Okay.
Because Brian mentioned, you know, about the litigation. Now, um, Ernie, Brian and I are the only ones who serve on that board. And I just want to say thank you for bringing that up because I do share the same concerns. There's a huge learning curve. We're in the middle of an appeal, that's no secret, right? I'm not bringing up anything that shouldn't be mentioned. We're in the middle of appeal. Um, our current attorney has spent countless hours trying to get up to speed and we are just about at the decision. And now you're talking about bringing somebody else in who's gonna also have to get up to speed. So this is an expense, it's an expense for the town, it's an expense for the planning board. And I just want to echo what Brian said about those concerns.
All of that, but was that, I'm sorry, was that a question for Brian?
I mean, that's just one of my concerns is.
Yeah.
He brought it up.
It's a big, big thing.
No, I, I understand that, and we're all probably going to bring up similar, similar things. I just want, I mean, does anybody have any specific questions for Brian and his opinion?
How you doing, Brian?
Then why would we do this? Why are we doing this? Why are we burning up this time here? Why are we doing this?
Okay, can we get through the process, please?
Well, we need to know why.
Okay, why not? Why, why not? Why, why shouldn't we?
Well, then, yes, I agree, we should, if you want to do it, let's do it, but let's make it fair for everybody and not just picking out two professionals out of the board.
Who, we're talking about what? We're talking about fair and open what?
For everyone, is it fair and open for everyone?
Talking about who, we're talking about what?
You're going around and you're not answering the question.
Hey, guys, this isn't an executive session, this is public.
Can we move on, Ernie, if you wouldn't mind?
Um, I don't have any, any problem with the, with the fair and open process, uh, you know, and it's, uh, i- i- in government, it's, 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 truthfully, it's the right thing to do, um, to constantly reevaluate. Doesn't mean you're gonna change. I have my reservations, which, would change. I think, you know, longevity, um, especially in our attorney, uh, is important to me. That's why we had, we did have an attorney for 40 years because it was, that institutional knowledge is important. Now we've had Ken for a year. I don't, I don't have, uh, I don't have any issues with him. Um, the, uh, um, but, you know, as, as far as, you know, I, I can tell you this, the professionals aren't gonna take an exception to the fact that we're doing it. That, that's, that's, that's how they, their business is. They go through this all the time. Um, so that, that's, that part of it's not an issue. Um, I, I share, uh, Joan, your concerns, your concerns, you know, as far as, um, being in the middle of a pretty substantial litigation. Um, uh, I, I would, uh, that would be my concern. You know, I mean, unless, uh, Perry Mason comes back from the dead and wants to, the job, you know, I mean.
We could also go through this and end up with both of them again.
Well, that's the point, is, is that, and if the choice is made, the choice is made free and open and fair and, and not under duress. That's the idea.
Yeah.
That, you know, that's all, I mean, re- reexamining, reexamining positions is, uh, is, is part of what we're supposed to do, that's it, you know, so. I don't, I don't have an issue with it, doesn't mean we're gonna change anything. Alls we're doing is take, is, um, is, is taking a look and make sure we're, we're operating in the most efficient manner with the best, um, assets available to us. So, that's it, that's all I get to say. Questions for me?
No? Good job, Ernie. Good job, you're up.
Um, so I kind of had an observation, I wasn't at the meeting where this was, uh, kind of thrown out there, um, and I was surprised, come on, guys. You just, it just sat there and no one seconded or no discussion. And, uh, I looked at the fair and open process and I was surprised because my understanding, it's, it's a shallow understanding, um, but that prior to soliciting applications, we'd have a publicly, um, assembled set of, uh, required skills. And, uh, what I saw frankly was, I didn't think it would get anyone, it didn't look like it would attract top tier talent, so I was surprised. Um, I was surprised because there was no second, there was no motion made, there was no discussion. Um, and, and again, I mean, there's supposed to be a written process, established document before soli- solicitation begins. There's supposed to be public opening, which I guess we're kind of doing after the fact. So I have problems with how this is brought up. It feels, maybe this is fine, but it feels uncomfortable to me to bring it up in public session, uh, because it feels like we're, we're booing a narrative that could be used against us for, for ongoing issues. Um, so again, I would kind of echo the kind of why are we doing this? Uh, I also had my concerns that it seemed like it was like a lame duck attempt, um, at stacking professionals. I also had the concerns of, if we're gonna do it, I'm not against, um, fair and open, going out to RFP, um, have done it all the time. But why selective RFP? Uh, why just a few? I'd want to have kind of the whole gamut. I would like to go through all the data regarding it. How much is this gonna cost us, like, on the onset? I'd like to craft it carefully, come up with who we're looking for in a broad sense, compare it to who we have. I'd like to have a discussion, uh, in executive session amongst ourselves, which unfortunately it seems like we can't do, um, where we could say, hey, frankly, how do we feel about current professionals? For those of us who can opine on the prior professionals, good and bad, like, tell us more. Um, what can we bring to this to help us craft that advertisement for the perfect professional going forward? So i- it's all well and good if I just had a pile, a repository of, uh, professionals' resumes that I can pick and choose from. Um, I, I get the, the comments like scr- scrambling and making decisions under duress, but I don't know if I feel comfortable accepting that in public because we did take a vote, uh, and I look back on it, a vote was made. Um, well, Ken wasn't voted until March, so it wasn't January.
Uh, yes, because in January, we had the issues that we had, then we had to scramble for, you know, Rich Aller for a month. And then the unfortunate circumstances, as much as I would have liked to have met Ken prior, um, you know, there, there was, there were applications that needed to be heard.
Right, but these unfortunate circumstances that you're referring to, I mean, we can't really talk about, but prior to the unfortunate circumstances of getting rid of an attorney that we had for 40 years, and yes, losing all the institutional knowledge, I mean, there's, there's, there's a bigger narrative in there, so I, I think, you know, I'm gonna tread lightly. Okay.
Sorry, this isn't about replacing, replacing that attorney. I apologize, this isn't about replacing that attorney. This is about the process that didn't happen back in January, that probably should have.
Well, okay, so, and then I was on the other side of this and I kind of remember when Catherine Sarmad, vaguely remember, uh, uh, she had gone out on her own and it seemed to me, again, as just like a resident, that, I don't know if you, did you guys know, were you made aware that she was going off on her own? Um, circumstances changed for her. So to me, that kind of made sense, that, you know, that we were looking at this. So I don't know that this just kind of happens, snap of the fingers. I think there were some, some reasons that I, you know, without the benefit of council, uh, without the benefit of executive session, I don't really want to go into here, but I think that I'm okay, of course, with having a fair and open process. Uh, but I do worry about the, the cost in money in the short term, the cost in time to get up to speed for the professionals, the cost in optics to larger forces and narratives at play. Um, I am worried about, again, kind of stacking professionals in advance of a reorg. Uh, I think it, I think this is in, I don't think going out to RFP is in bad form and a fair and open process is in bad form, but I think the way that this came about after the fact, after a posting had already been published is pretty bad form, and I think it feeds an unfortunate, an actual unfortunate circumstance of, uh, this board looking a certain way. I think, you know, we can't dig into why our professionals were changed, but there were legitimate reasons why we can't, we could not go with our professionals. The other thing that was mentioned too was kind of, we have professionals that are doing our master plan, we have professionals that are doing big picture things, we're, we have professionals, we have, uh, conflict professionals, um, I'm concerned that, like what happened with our prior planner is she was then moved to the professional for the township. And what if, like, if we have a, if we have a contract for our current planner to do the master plan, we say, you know what? You do the master plan and now we're gonna solicit someone else to take over as planner for planning board? I mean, how many planners can we afford? So that's like kind of a, a bigger cost concern, but that's it. Random thoughts as I was going through. Any, any questions for me?
Yes, actually.
Okay.
So you, you use the term a couple of times, stacking professionals. Can you explain to me what you mean by that, cuz I'm not exactly sure?
Uh, I'm not really sure, uh, I'm thinking of. I'm thinking of, we're in a quasi lame duck session, here it is in December, and we're talking about setting it up and queuing up professionals in advance of a reorg. And I, I feel uncomfortable, I feel like it, it would be more appropriate, especially now that we have the thirty-day term on some of our professionals, that it would, it would be more fair and transparent to let the incoming planning board make the decision on who they want to use, rather than us kind of having a hand in this. I don't, I also don't want, you know, if there's a cost involved, again, you know, money and time, that we burden them on the onset when they're just trying to get up to speed. And then again, you know, having thinking I was going to have one attorney, having a conflict attorney, then getting another attorney, it was uncomfortable to have to kind of get up to speed over the course of some months. I would rather, like, this goes back to if there are issues, if, if we had an executive session, we could have a conversation, I would prefer to work with people that we have. And people may not see this about me, but like, if, if, if there are people that we have that, that are already employed and doing work for us, if there's an issue with something they're doing, if, if we'd like to tweak the style of how they're doing things, I prefer to actually make the effort to work with them, and I don't think, I've worked with Ken, I've interfaced with Lindsay. If I ask, hey, I'd like this done differently, like, I don't know, I think some of us haven't worked closely enough with these professionals to change them, yet these professionals have been slowly getting up to speed, and now we're going to change them again, and it would be better just to be, you know, having a conversation with our professionals offline and trying to work with them and improve how we're doing things. I, I, I don't know, it's, it, it just, I don't think we should be, I don't know. What other questions do you have?
Anywhere else? Questions?
I strongly agree with his last point.
I don't know what my last point was.
Your last point was that, you know, we have two professionals that are doing, in my eyes, a, a great job, but if there are others in the room that don't, don't agree, then they should speak to the professionals and say, I'd like to see, see.
The unfortunate circumstance was up until September, we weren't allowed to.
What?
We, we as board members weren't allowed to contact professionals.
They're here every meeting, except for this meeting.
But if we had, if we had a question or something that we'd like to address prior to that, there was, there was no, there was no connectivity, so.
Conversation for Jim Zep, who said that you can't contact anybody without permission.
I didn't say who said it, I just said that, that it wasn't, it wasn't allowed.
But it's still not allowed, so there's no issue.
Okay, well, I mean, it's not my understanding that that's the situation anymore.
Jim Zep changed his mind?
I have no idea how that came down, but at the end of the day, that's not the conversation that I had with him.
Well, if this is, if this is on what I presented, which I think it is, then I would just add that I, I had asked, you know, this goes back to the, how are we going to pay for these professionals? Should applicants pay for them? But if, like on a day like today, where finally, we're sitting down and we're trying to improve process, it would have been fantastic. I wish, I would have known the professionals were not going to be here. If the professionals were here, I feel like we could have just had like a one-on-one conversation and say, hey, I would like you to do this, do you think it's in your capability to do this? You know, we.
Which is generally what happens when, when, right, so that's generally what happens when you go through this process.
This process, but I'm saying, we have our professionals, they're paid, we're paying them, but we're ceding all that time to hearing applications. On a night like tonight, we could have had them in, we could have had a fruitful discussion behind closed doors, and kind of come up with like, how can we improve the process? How can we smooth things over? How can we make things better for business? But instead, we're talking about like, let's throw them out and replace them again.
No, no, we're not, that's not, again, we, we're, we're going back to the, the idea that they're being replaced, and that's not, that's not the, the object of the game. The object of the game is to be in a position where if something should happen, like it did in January, that we are prepared for that, instead of being put in a position where we are unprepared, have applications that have to be heard, have to try to get temporary people in. I mean, poor Joan was scrambling, trying to figure out how to, how to run meetings because she didn't know who was going to preside over them. That's terrible, that's a terrible, in my opinion, that's, that's a stressful place to be.
It was terrible, and I was going to wait my turn, but you keep, the word that keeps coming up is scrambling, 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 and under duress. We had, we appointed Steve Warner and Amanda Wolf, we were all set. There was something that happened in the planning and zoning office that presented a conflict that was never mentioned to us.
I didn't say that that was, I didn't say that that was the case.
Let me finish.
What I said was.
It doesn't matter what you said, you said, kept saying, under duress, scrambling, and yes, that happened, it was not mentioned to us. We were caught in a situation where, oh my God, what are we going to do? Nobody told us about this, even though they knew about it. So Amanda Wolf said, I can't represent you. Steve Warner, I can't represent you due to another unfortunate situation. So at that point, I reached out, we found Rich Ahler, he was willing to keep going and going and going until we found somebody. I asked all of the board, do you have anybody? Jeanette Burke gave me a name, Ken, Mark gave me a name, and we brought them in. Jeanette's person decided, well geez, I don't really want to do this. Mark had Ken's name, we were so lucky to get Ken. He is like one of the top lawyers.
This is nothing against Ken.
He just spoke in Italy, he just spoke at the League of Municipalities, he's mentioned as a top-notch attorney, and we're doing this to him. It's not fair, he just got up to speed with the litigation, I think he's absolutely fantastic, but to say that we were under duress, this board voted, didn't have to, we could have said, let's hear five more attorneys, but they voted.
We had applications that we had to hear that night.
We could have had Rich Ahler, he said he would have continued on.
Rich Ahler actually very specifically told me that he was only going to be with us for the month of February, and then he was done.
I'm, I'm surprised he only spoke with you, but that's not what he told me, and he agreed to stay on until we found somebody. I also want to bring up the fact about the planner. When Catherine went out on her own, the way we found out, sitting here as a board, I guess it was around November, we're looking at the letterhead, and we had a contract with Harbor Consultants. It no longer said Harbor Consultants, and we said, what happened here? She never told us she went out on her own, so she had no backup with a bigger firm, and we were all concerned about that, we expressed, you know, concern. And so in the December meeting, and it's in the minutes you just approved, Ernie said, Ernie made the motion, well, let's let her contract extend till the end of December, and everybody agreed. We said, okay. So we, we knew we were going out for planner. I had three planners land, lined up, I had Lindsay with Neglia, I had the Price, oh gosh, I can never remember, Price with a G out of Hoboken, and I had another one. Lindsay came in, everybody was enamored, and I never expected at that meeting for everybody to say, let's vote for Lindsay. We had to cancel the other two planners, so don't say you're under duress.
I didn't even know there were other two planners.
Of course you did, it was announced here. Dory, did you not have to cancel me, Price, whatever?
Phillips Price.
Phillips Price, thank you. Yes, we did, and everybody knew about it, it was brought up at the meeting, never expected it, everybody was, just wanted her, so it was not duress, everybody decided they wanted that, and the other two had have been canceled. You know, and everybody voted, everybody was aware of it, so I don't appreciate the, the scenario that you're trying to create, that I brought everything here under duress. It is absolutely not true. You can backtrack, but that's what you just said.
What I'm saying is, and there's no blame here, and I'm sorry that you're coming at it from that position, because this is not.
Me in this position, I've heard and I've seen the emails you have sent.
No, actually, I didn't put you in that position, you put you in that position, and there's, there's, therein lies the rub, okay? At the end of the day, I'm sorry that you're coming from a place of blame, no one is blaming you, that is not the intention here, no one is saying that.
That's where it's coming across.
And I'm correcting that, thank you.
I've seen your emails.
And I'm correcting that, thank you. So what I'm saying right now is, the point being, circumstances being what they were in January. Listen, I've been approached on more than one occasion by various individuals who were uncomfortable with how it happened. Listen, whatever it is, or whatever's been said, one way or another, the conversation is being brought to bear right now, there is no blame here, there is no finger pointing here, there is no.
Scrambling, under duress, process that didn't happen in January, of course it is. Point, point, point.
But wait a minute, how is, how, a circum, somebody's talking about circumstances, right? So circumstances being what they were, did you create those circumstances? Because if you personally feel you created them, then I can understand how you would feel like there's blame there. No one's saying you personally created them, we're saying circumstances being what they were. People can be victims of circumstance, circumstances can happen around people.
It doesn't matter, every person here had a right to vote, and they did vote. Everybody voted, let's move on, let's hear the rest of it. Let's hear the rest of it.
I just want it on record that no one's blaming you.
I want it on record that everybody voted, that it was not where somebody came in and said, in under twenty seconds, because I missed the last meeting, and I was shocked when I listened to it, I want to talk about plans for next year, blah, 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 that haven't been, having been said, we can now move on to ordinance twenty-five nineteen, not have any discussion, put a, an RFP out on the website that was so defective that it had to be taken down.
That was the municipal issue, that's not our issue.
After we wrote, several people wrote to say, this is not, you know, what we want to do. So let's be transparent.
But that, the, the, the issue with the defect with the ad, that was a municipal issue, that's not our issue, right? So our issue right now is.
It never should have gone without a discussion, so I do appreciate the discussion we're having now, I'd like to hear what Birgit has to say.
Yeah, so would I, but in, at the end of the day, the point being that no one is blaming anyone, no one is finger pointing, I just need that to be understood. This is a basic discussion, and we should be capable of having it like adults.
All right, but you didn't answer my previous question, is why are we singling out only the planner and the attorney?
We're not up to that yet, we'll get there.
Okay.
So Birgit, if you wouldn't mind.
As the newest person on this board, I am keenly aware of how much I don't know, and how ramping up and learning things takes time, and like, I didn't know that we couldn't have executive session because we don't have an attorney present tonight.
But why, let's, can we get to, you said that at this portion, Celeste, you would tell us why we don't have an attorney tonight? And, and professionals, why don't we have them?
During my conversation with Mr. Poro, when I asked him whether or not he would prefer to be present this evening, he declined, he said no. And I asked whether or not the meeting could, could continue without him. He said yes, that wasn't an issue, and that he would prefer to not be present during the confines of this conversation.
He could have excused himself for part of it, but been here for the important things.
He chose not to be here.
Okay. Let's see what he says.
I, I was not.
I'm sorry, Birgit. I'm sorry, are you extenuating that I'm lying?
I'm not going to get into this now.
Okay, well, the unfortunate circumstances that you said, that you just said, we'll see what he says.
Right, I can't do he said she said.
I told you what he said to me. Now, what he chooses to say to you, I mean, he says a lot of things to you.
I don't know.
But what he chooses to say to you is going to be different.
We're in public session without the benefit of counsel.
Yeah. He's not here, so we can't discuss it.
I understand that, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not attesting to his veracity, I'm, I'm saying that Joan is, is, you know, making a statement against mine, and, and I, I think that that's.
I said he's not here.
I'm trying to remind everyone that we're in a public session, we don't have benefit of counsel.
Here we are.
You know, this is not doing anything good for the township of Sparta. I think we have to.
When people make accusations, they should either stand behind them, or, you know, not make them.
Take one, I asked why he wasn't here.
So Birgit, if you wouldn't mind.
I, I didn't appreciate the timeline that fair and open process would be. It was, I thought it was a theoretical thing. We're on December third, soon to be December fourth, the town's reorg is January sixth. I saw the RFP that was posted on the website, and I was surprised by it, I don't know who wrote it. I thought that it was inadequate. I think that an RFP for the planning board should be crafted by the planning board. I don't think that we have enough time to craft something, the holidays are coming. I have concerns about what Mr. Poro is working on right now in relation to active board business, and he is, I, I don't know what he's working on, but I would want him to continue to work on our behalf and on behalf of the town. There's been a lot of things said in this session that we have to be careful with because it is a public session, and I am not familiar with those things, and it's very cryptic language, and I would personally benefit from discussing this in executive session with our planning board attorney present. The litigation and the appeal is immensely important, and I, again, as a new member of this board, getting, trying to get up to speed, you know, while also having my own work that I need to get done, you know, it, it's, it's hard, it's a lot, so I can only imagine what Mr. Poro is, you know, dealing with. Lindsay, did she also come on in January?
Yes.
Okay.
A little later than that.
Okay.
Because we were doing the, we decided, we knew we had to do interviews.
Okay.
So maybe she was, she came on actually after Ken, so she would have been the end of March, maybe beginning of April.
You're right, she was after Ken.
And Ken was not January's March.
Correct.
You know, if, if this board, or whoever voted for her felt confident in her, I haven't seen anything that gives me pause about her professional qualifications, and I'm worried because I did not really appreciate this timeline that what we were supposedly talking about was, let's do this now. I thought it was more of a, oh, next time that we need it, kind of thing. I would be, I would be, I would be worried that the, that Lindsay and Ken, who are both working on things and are both learning and trying to gain some of the institutional knowledge that the previous professionals who held those positions for a very long time had, that takes time. And I, I believe that they, until they demonstrate that they should not be given any more time to do that, I believe that they should be given the time to get up to speed so that they can perform to the best of their abilities, and, and that's, that's, that's my, that's my opinion.
Very well said.
Yep, agreed. Any questions? No, Ron, you're up. She said it perfectly.
All right, so, I, you know, my, my feeling is on, on the fair and open competition, I think every township professional should be selected through fair and open competition. There are times you can't do that. that. Um, and I think we, we had some of that and I think we did the right thing. But I still believe every township professional should be selected through fair and open competition. And the reason you do that is, I don't want to say who's good, who's bad. I, I think what fair and open competition says is, you know, who's best value. Um, so you're not, you're not looking at how do they do, how do they do? And I don't want to say anything that's going to discourage someone if we do go fair and open, say, well, they've already decided. So, so I want to be very careful how I, I say it. So let me just live it with, every township professional should be selected through fair and open competition. And I think, um, that should be done every three to five years. Take a look at what's new. What, what, who's out there that wasn't there? How, you know, and, and you get a chance to assess performance. Now, the only other thing I'm going to say is, um, fair and open competition costs money. Um, so, um, my feeling is, I'd like to see if we go fair and open competition, that we kick it down the road to next year. Let that board decide. Let's spend the money next year. Um, hopefully there's going to be more, more money available. Um, so I would, I would definitely support fair and open competition. Was Lindsay, was Lindsay selected through fair and open competition? I, I had thought she was, um, but I, I can't remember. I kind of remember interviewing a few people there, having both come in front of us. So we should look at that.
I reached out to several people. I'll let you finish. Go ahead.
But, but so, and to Joan's point, I think that includes the attorney, the engineer and the planner.
I have a question. When you said best value, do you, would fair and open mean that we're obligated to accept the lowest bidder?
No.
No.
Okay.
And, and that's best value. You, you, you get to weigh the whole package together as opposed to, you know, the lowest bid.
The planning board has a budget.
They don't have to do lowest bidder for professionals because it's a unique, um, thing. And everyone is a little bit different, you know, in their qualifications and everything else. So that's why they're not in the bid process because it would be impossible to write a, actually, if you wrote a bid specifically to all the qualifications you wanted, you, 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 in essence, only be, you'd be narrowing it to that one person, you know what I mean? So they don't, they don't do that. It's, uh, um.
Mark?
I agree wholeheartedly with Ron that we tabled this process until next year.
Would you mind bringing your microphone down?
Of course. Thank you. Um, I, I agree with Ron wholeheartedly that we should table the pro, this process right now and do it next year when we will have a, a 60% turnover on the, on the town council. And obviously we'll have quite a bit of change here. Um, so and to Burgett's point, these people are up to speed. They know what they're doing. These people, you know, this is one of, one of the top lawyers in the state. He's appeared before the Supreme Court, I mean, multiple times. He knows what he's doing. And we should be just blessed and grateful that he's helping us. Now, of course, there seems to be some, some accusation that Mr. Poro just fell out of my Rolodex. But let me tell you about exactly what happened, okay? So the day, the day that we reorganized, we asked Mr. Warner, we nominated and voted to have Mr. Warner join us. And then once he saw the videotape, he realized that there was some problems and he withdrew, drew his, his, uh, his candidacy, let's say. Um, I was one of the ones, along with Joan, along with Alan Dash and several other people, that scoured this state, looking for people that would come up to Sparta, New Jersey and be a, an attorney. And it just so happened, probably after two or three weeks of doing this, and probably the 10th person I had talked to, I was the one that found Mr. Aller, okay? And, and, and he said it wouldn't, he, he didn't want it to be a long-term thing. So I kept hunting. And, uh, and I put two and two together. Uh, Mr., I called a gentleman that lives in town, in our town. There are two attorneys, two partners of the firm, Brock Eichler, live in this town. I called them and explained the situation. And they said, well, it just so happens that we're hiring a tremendous professional right now for, to expand our land use practice. His name is Ken Poro. And that's how it came about. And then Ken Poro came and appeared in front of us. We saw his resume and it was tremendous. And he's done a great job for us this past year. He's, he's our representative. He's involved in our litigation. He's the guy carrying the ball right now. And to trip him up or to take him off the field and put someone else on, when we're down on the 20-yard line in the red zone, is, is, would be irresponsible for this board. It wouldn't be the right thing to do for the residents of Sparta. That's it. I have more detail if you want, but I'll, I'll just hold off for now.
I just have a question. Um, so when things had, had gone sideways with Mr. Warner, do you think that it would have been beneficial to you at the time if you were capable of going back to a repository of interested parties that you already knew were interested parties and being capable of working from that, as opposed to, as you put it, scouring the state?
Right, scouring the state, correct.
For a professional, right? I use the word scramble. You use the word scour. Six in one.
Mm-hmm.
So do you, do you think that it might have been beneficial to you to have had a repository of professionals that you could have been capable of, of going to and potentially utilizing that information?
Sure.
What would have been more beneficial was if the information was disclosed to us by the Planning and Zoning Office. That would have been beneficial. We wouldn't have been in that position.
We're not, we're not discussing that. We aren't discussing details.
Can I, can I just suggest, I, I think this conversation is going a little bit further than, than we probably should.
So, yeah, I agree. I agree. Um, so, so that's my, my point was that if we had the opportunity to have a repository of individuals available to us, that could have mitigated some of the stressors that we had at the beginning of the year, which was, has been my only point from the beginning. So, um, any other questions?
Why not do it in Q4 of 2026? Doesn't have to be done now.
So I was, so it sounds like Ron, Ron made, I think, a good point. Three to five-year potential turnover, looking back. I, I think we're saying we're in agreement that, of course, like, if, do you have a Rolodex still?
I do.
If you had a, if you had this like magical Rolodex of all the land use attorneys and we had that and it was free, I think we all agree that if it had planners, engineers, attorneys, that we, we would love to have that, right? But it costs money. So to Ron's point, because I've, I've heard Ron at some other town councils talking about money. And I think that's, that's a good point. Um, and, and Celeste, I mean, master plan. So if we're, if we're, if, the point of this is you're trying to plan for the future and you're trying to say like, best practices, we never want to be in that situation again, you know, that wasn't the greatest. I think most of us are in agreement that like the professionals we, that we ended up with are good. I think if we don't all agree that, agree with that, we should have an executive session with our professionals and discuss what we would like to see from them and see if they were able to deliver on that and then follow up next steps accordingly. But I think we're in agreement. I'll borrow the term from some, we might be in violent agreement at times, uh, on this, that of course, like this is great. So my point was just like, I don't know how much it costs. I keep hearing from everyone, almost everyone, there's a cost involved. I would love to see that cost. There's amount of time involved. I would like to see that amount of time. There's a reorg coming up. Uh, it's, it seems fair to let, you know, that process happen and have, but if, if you're just saying best practices, this is what I think, then I'm in favor of, of, favor of it. Of course, I would expand again the scope to all the professionals, not just a few, because you've, you know, you've been approached by people that say, oh, that January process was defective or they had problems with it, whatever. I'm saying, when you single out two professionals and we have more than two, then let's, let's keep it fair and open and let's expand it to all of the professionals.
I hear what you're saying.
Okay, thank you.
I'd also like to make another point. If this RFP were to go out, it would be, uh, a very short turnaround. It would be barely 30 days. And they would be looking, the people who responded would be looking and say, why is Sparta turning over its professionals in less than one year? I don't want, I don't want to put in.
There are some municipalities who do this annually.
But, but we're not necessarily like every other municipality and that, and, and I don't know of other municipalities that do do it every single year.
So Burgett, if I, if I could, just my thoughts as an answer to that is, it goes back to, if somebody was selected under fair and open competition, I don't think we should do it every year. If somebody was not selected that way, then I think we owe it to the township to do it. And that would be the reasoning, is that because, because they weren't done through this process, you know, we appreciate what they've done, but we owe it to, to, to the residents to make sure we're still getting best value, which is why we're going fair and open.
I think that, I know me personally, as far as our, our selections and I, and I'm, you know, as I said, I don't really have any, I don't have any issues with, with our professionals. But, uh, I didn't, I didn't feel a part of the process. And mostly it came down to how it happened, you know? I mean, but I think that.
I didn't feel part of the process because it just happened like on, so unexpectedly.
Right. That's what I'm saying. And I think that's, you know, um, I, I know that's my, my feeling on it is, is we got stuck in a, in a place where we had to, um, you know, and, you know, and again, I, I didn't take the chairwoman's, uh, uh, comments as derogatory towards you. I took it as a compliment for, for you getting it done, um, with, with all the stuff that got thrown in our, in our face on, on, on getting it done. But, you know, again, um, I, I would have preferred the way we did it a couple of years ago where we brought a couple of people in, interview, all of us interviewed them and all that kind of stuff. Um, you know, that, that's 2020 hindsight. I also agree. I, I, you know, I don't want to constantly change people either, you know? So, um, you know, there's, um, to Ron's point, you know, the three, you know, I think it's a three to five-year stint, um, generally to get, uh, to get an idea, you know, um, your, your first year working for a town, you're, you're, you're still learning, you know, um, you know, well, you know, e- every single town has different ordinances, different land use codes, everything else. So you, you got to get, get up to speed on those, whether it be the planner or the, um, you know, again, I, you know, full disclosure, I, I, I voted to not replace our attorney or our planner in the first place last time. So I was, I was on the short end of that, but I.
No, you, no, you better go back and check.
Yeah.
Yeah. Everybody voted for Lindsay and that's why, and I was so shocked because I had, as I said, I had three people lined up.
Oh, no.
And that night, it happened.
Once we, I'm, I'm talking about Catherine. I, I didn't, I voted against getting rid of her. I voted against getting rid of Tom. Well, what I'm saying is, once we got to, yes, I did vote for both Ken and, and for her when we had them. But truthfully, I felt like that was our only choice at that point. That was, that was my feeling was that, you know, we, we had to, we had to move forward. We had to get going as a board. We had backlogs and, and we have two qualified people. But I didn't feel that I was personally a part of the process of, of getting them. And, and I understand. That's, that's not a, uh, that's not an accusation. It's a, it's a, it's a realization of the, uh, of, of where we're at. And I think that's, you know, that to me is a reason for a fair and open process. That, that's all. Um, not, not, not to mean that we don't, you know, uh, we don't keep with, with those people. You know, again, last time we did it, we had a fair, we did a full open process.
Yeah, we did the competitive contract.
Competitive contract. And, and I voted along with the majority of the board to, to retain them that, that year. Um, you know, so, um, but just so you understand, that's, that, that's where I'm coming from is, is just, just feeling like it was a hurried process and a.
No, we were all put in a position that we shouldn't have been in. I agree with that. You know, I'm with you on it. Um, but really, you know, we were so lucky to end up with the individuals that we did. I would like to see, I guess it's my turn now. I would, I would like to see the three to five-year process. They have been getting, you know, I think up to speed in an excellent manner. We have the litigation ongoing to bring somebody else in. That's the, the cost that you're not considering. There is a cost just to doing an RFP, but to bring somebody in to get up to speed on this very complicated issue. Um, and you know, if you're not understanding it, if you're not one of the three of us who serve on that board. So, um, I ask you to consider that. And I ask you, if you want to do fair and open, you know, it will be a decision we can make as a board. I think we've heard all the comments. Um, but all professionals, don't just pick two. And I think it sends a very bad message to those two professionals who now are like, why do I want to work at Sparta? They don't even want me. Um, and the specs, how come the planning board is not doing the specs? Who is doing the specs? Shouldn't we dictate if this is going to go out for an RFP, what we want in a planner, what we want in engineer, what we want in attorney, what we want in a secretary? I mean, that's what we should be doing.
For competitive contracts, that, that is the way that it works?
Fair and open, transparent. That's, you know, all or nothing. We're not picking, why did, why did you just pick two? Uh, you know, I really would like to know that answer.
The reason why two were picked was because those were the two that were in question when people were discussing how they were uncomfortable with the process in January and how that.
When were people discussing this? Because this, this did not happen here.
With me, excuse me. When people were discussing with me how they were uncomfortable with what happened in January. I think Ernie said it best when he kind of had mentioned.
Exactly as I said, I, I just felt like I, and, and I, I don't, I don't think I'm alone. I, I didn't feel like I was part of the process. You know, so that's all. I, 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 I think that's, maybe what we're trying to do here is to, is to, you know, correct that in that we, you know.
Exactly.
We bring in one or two other people and go, all right, you know what? We were right, we were right the first time. We got, we got the right person.
Why don't we just agree to do that in about three years then? You know, when the board is really changing over in 2026, a lot of you are going off at the end of it. And maybe that's a good time to do it. But you know, you, you, to keep trying to get people to get up to speed and cost the money that that's going to take, it just isn't sensible to me.
Can I ask a question along those, that line, Joan? So, you know, when I, when I hear the conversation tonight, I think people are putting out their opinions. But what it's really going to come down to is there will be a vote. Do we want to do this or not? Is, is that correct before, before we go forward?
I, I think at, at some point, there, there will be a vote. It will not be tonight.
Right. I agree. I agree with that. So, so, you know, everyone's going to have a say. Everyone's going to have a vote. And then we go with majority consensus. But, but I think the idea tonight is, let's just hear everybody out. But, but again, I want to be, I want to be careful because I want to make sure the conversation doesn't do anything that's going to hinder somebody from applying, you know, and I, you know, and I'll leave it there.
Okay.
So I.
My last question is though, why wasn't this even on the agenda? You clearly wanted this to be discussed, that you told our professionals not to come.
The decision was made last minute.
The agenda was redone because the attorney was not coming. That's why the Larry and Tana Allen application for, um.
No, the, the Larry and Tana Allen.
Extension of time?
The, the extension of time was moved because, um, Mr. Simmons had an eye doctor appointment and was likely going to be late. So, um, so since Lindsay was not going to be here, we decided to carry that. Originally, it was going to happen on the December 17th meeting. But, um, given that the, uh, I believe it's the engineer for the applicant. uh, I believe it's the engineer for the applicant wanted to be able to be available, that got carried to the January seventh meeting. So the only issue was the resolution, which when I called, uh, when I called Ken to find out what the status of that resolution was, because we hadn't received it, even though it was on the, uh, agenda.
It was just heard November fifth. They have thirty-five days. It was just heard November fifth.
Correct, and I just asked-
It's kind of rushing it.
I just asked him the status. I didn't ask him anything other than what the status was because we hadn't seen it. And, uh-
But forty-eight hours ago on Monday, you knew that this would be under other board business because I've seen your emails.
I was not confident at that point that it would be on the agenda at forty-eight hours ago.
Is that my email that, uh, I sent requesting to have a conversation about it?
There were lots of emails.
Conversation about it and Ron requested to have conversation about it. Other than the, the-
Better to have a conversation.
I did not receive a response from Rob or from Mark. Joan had indicated that she had sent an email to Jim Zep and was not going to reiterate that in an email to me. But everyone else who responded, responded that they would be, um, amiable to, uh, fair and open for various reasons.
So let me just interject there. So I, you didn't get a response from me because I had already sent and copied you in my response to Jim Zep.
I apologize.
And the other, just FYI, yeah, you, you sent it to another email address, which, which is, my personal email address, but it wasn't in there. So I don't, I didn't get that. I got the second one, but it was like twelve hours after the fact, so I didn't feel any need to-
I, I, I realized that after the fact, so, so I apologize, but one way or another.
No, but I just want to correct that. And then, uh, with the record too, I had a question. So now is, am I understanding correctly that you, you're, the reason you're seeking to cure the process undertaken in January retroactively, and this isn't meant in the way it's going to sound, but at the behest of non-planning board questions, concerns, whatever that were raised to you personally?
The planning board, Jeanette is a member of the planning board, Chris Dunbar is a member of the planning board, Brian is a member of the planning board. We've, we've all had, you know, we're all members of the, the planning board.
No, no, I'm, you made some remarks a little bit earlier that said, oh, I've heard from people, outside people that have, weren't sure how, how that happened in January. So I just wanted to-
Oh, there were members of the public that had approached me as well.
They'll be here, they'll be here for the public session in just a few moments.
There were members from the public, exactly.
For those of you who can't see, it's packed. But, but, okay, so, so just to be clear, um, there were, so I think it is appropriate now that we're at least afforded the opportunity to have this discussion and then proceed with discussion, because I think the right way to cure this, if that's how you see it, is to have this amongst ourselves and to frame this amongst ourselves first.
And, um, so for, for Jeanette's, um, portion, because unfortunately she couldn't be here this evening, she, uh, asked me to read the following. And this is Jeanette Burke's statement. I believe Ken Poro and Lindsay Knight are doing excellent work. However, without the opportunity to interview additional candidates, it's difficult to know whether there may have been other options that were equally qualified or more cost effective. Maintaining full transparency in processes like this is simply sound business practice and critical for the future of this board. Chris Dunbar also asked me to, to, uh, reiterate the sentiments of, of her email without, um, giving full disclosure of a commentary that she is in favor of, of a fair and open process. And, and that she, she would, she would welcome the opportunity. So, um, that having been said, um, I think everyone has-
I just, you know, I, I just like that. I mean, I think the, this isn't a reflection on our, on, on these professionals. This is a reflection on the process. You know, that, that's what I want to make clear of. I don't, you know, I don't, I think they've, they've, they've done a great job. I just feel like, um, we didn't fully go through the process last year because of how everything tumbled one thing into another where, where we found ourselves. And we had to, we had to do what we did, you know? And, uh, but I, but, so, so again, it, it has, it has nothing to do with the, uh, with those professionals themselves. It has to do with, it has to do with the process and, uh, you know, you know, and that's it. I just want to make that very clear. I don't have, I don't have an issue with the, with the professionals.
Ernie, I just want to, if I can, just tag on to that. You know, when, when I'm hearing words like, you know, cure the process and, 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 you know, you know, my feeling is we did the right thing. We did what we had to do. We, you know, now we're at a point, we have a little more time. So to, to me, it's not a matter of curing the process, just there's an opportunity to, to, to do a fair and open, which I believe we, you know, we, we should consider as a board and vote on a board. And then based on the result that I vote, we move forward or we don't.
We have additional information though. Can you give us the dollar cost of what the process will be? And, you know, why we would do it before a new board takes place? You know, see if the other board even wants it because it is a lot of money.
So here's the thing.
And also not just the dollar cost of going and doing the RFP and the people doing the review. We haven't decided even who would be doing that review. You know, last time it was done in twenty twenty-three, the town council and the town manager and everybody took that process. And then they gave back an application and said, this is the only one you can look at.
Okay, so, yeah.
Remember it took like six months back then for that process.
Because we went through a competitive contract and that was different.
And they went through every page of the hundred plus page RFP. And there were, there were play, there were, I think there was like seven or eight applicants. And guess what? Six of them didn't cross their Ts and didn't dot their i's.
Competitive contracts is very different.
Only one person left.
No, there were two.
There was one person left.
One on town council, one on planning.
One on town council, one on planning.
But again, I'm not sure there's stuff we should be getting into.
No, but my question, which, you know, was, will you provide us please with the dollar amount that it will take? You know, who's going to be doing the reviewing? How much money is going to be spent, whether it is by the QPA or, you know, everybody else? The attorneys, who's going to be involved in this process? And also come up with some projection of how much it's going to cost to get up to speed if we hire another attorney and, um, have to, um, get up to speed with the current litigation? That's what I'd like to see because that's going to help in our decisions. We need facts.
That, that we should have.
The unfortunate circumstance is that trying to put together a projection of how, how much it's going to cost for somebody to get up to speed is going to be dependent upon what their, what their hourly is or what their rates are.
Well, you can take the average, you can take what we currently have and you can say, this is how long it took one person to get up to speed. Now it's going to take just as long for another person to get up to speed because there's a dollar cost associated with that.
Right, that, that really, you know, we shouldn't be looking at. We can ask that question if we bring people in, you know? You know, how many hours do you think it's going to take you to come up to speed? But we shouldn't make that decision for them. We shouldn't do that analysis.
And the RFP offering talks about the rate. It dictates the rate.
That's right.
So it's not, you see, people don't just come in here and throw out numbers. They, they come in here knowing that they're going to get two twenty-five an hour. Plus or minus, I don't know the exact number. I'm just throwing that number out as an example.
Let's not do it in a vacuum.
Okay, so my takeaways from what I've heard, people are concerned with litigation. People are concerned with cost. People are concerned with turnover, right? Can, can, can we say that?
Timeline, and the timeline. I, I'm, I don't think that right now, like December of twenty twenty-five, thirty days before a reorg, I don't believe that now is the right time to say, yes, let's go ahead and do an RFP.
Typically it happens in November to December.
But now we have thirty day clauses we put in last year. We put in thirty day clauses, so we can do this in January.
I, I'm not saying that. Typically, typically in, in November and December is, is the timeline for when RFPs go out for professionals, so that they have a repository of individuals for their reorganization meetings, so that the review can happen in that space. So that's, that's very typical of municipalities to do that.
When I brought it up last year, didn't go through because it was going to be too costly and let's wait for the new board. Those were the two reasons. So here we are again.
Celeste, do you have litigation and kind of bigger picture concerns in your list of concerns?
I did, I, I do have litigation, I have costs and I have turnover.
I mean, even if an RFP was out on the first of November, that still would have been sixty days during one of the most busy times of the year. And now we're in December and people are just trying to finish up work for the year. I mean, like we've, we've already lost thirty days. So, and from my understanding is all of the four professionals would all have to respond to the RFP.
Yes, so fair and open is a twenty day window to, to, to leave it open for, for the ad. So there's a twenty day window where applicants can apply and the QPA acquires that data. And once, once the window is closed, it's closed. If, if, if the window closes at ten thirty in the morning and somebody, um, puts in an application at four thirty in the afternoon, they're, right, they're, they're not part.
Okay, so twenty days from tomorrow is Christmas Day.
Now it would be from the seventeenth because we can't vote till the seventeenth. So you're into twenty twenty-six with a new board.
Don't we still need to put together the verbiage on the-
Right, we were never asked, we were never asked what should go in this and what we want to see in a professional. Who's supposed to come up with that?
Process, right?
Do share.
I am. My thought process when I originally started this, one of the reasons why I didn't want to wait until next year is because I value the opinions of the current board. I know some of you may not think that. And yes, there are times we violently agree. And there are some times we violently disagree. And I think that's what makes us a good board. I think that's what gives us the opportunity to have these conversations, to bring forward these points, to, to, to give this data and, and to give us the meat that we need in order to, to make good decisions, right? I value your opinion. I wanted your opinion. Can I, can I wait until January? Absolutely, this process can be done. I may not be sitting in this seat. At the end of the day, we can leave it to whomever, but when we do take the vote, we can decide on that at the time. But one way or another, the reason I wanted to be capable of doing it was so that I could have the opinions of the people who are sitting in this room, so that when I personally, whether I was sitting in this chair or not sitting in this chair, next year could have that information, could use that information and, you know, keep that in mind in the forefront. Because whether you're on this board or on the other side of the dais, you're still part of the community and your voice still matters, your opinion still matters. And I thought that that was a very important piece for me to bring forward into the process. I was mistaken. I also, like Ernie, thought that it would be, uh, an opportunity to bring forward a comfort level for certain people who were uncomfortable with how the process went in the beginning of the year. I was mistaken. I'm allowed, you know, I mean, I'm, I was mistaken. So that's why we're having this conversation now. That's why we're getting our opinions out now because I do value every word that's being said in this room. And I really want that to carry forward. I think it's important. So like I said, my takeaways are we need to understand what the, what the, uh, impact is on litigation. We need to understand what the cost is and we need to understand what the, you know, what the ramifications are of turnover. Those are my takeaways. That's what I'm going to work on. And that's what I'm hoping to bring back to the table when the discussion continues. And the next round of this discussion will likely continue in closed session so that we can have people here and have those conversations with them. And we can have a deeper, more meaningful conversation with each other. I just wanted us to be able to take this opportunity to share with each other, to bring forward and issue a topic that is a hot topic. And, and obviously needed full time consideration and discussion. I think it's important. So anybody have any questions of me?
Can we take a three minute break?
We can do whatever you'd like, Ernie. We're going to take a, a, a five minute recess.
I'd just like to say I do appreciate the conversation. As I said, I was shocked last month when I looked at the YouTube and there was just an announcement. So I, I do appreciate it coming back. And I think, you know, I learned a lot from all of you and hopefully you've learned from each other. And we take this all into consideration and look at the bigger picture of things and not just the right now, what's going to be best in the next year, three to five years.
I don't think this is such a bad thing though, however we got here. Because we could look back at the previous year or those of us who've served more than that, because I just came on January. And we can look at it and frame it as like goals and objectives. Again, if we could have like a one-on-one with our professionals and check in with them at the end of the year before we kind of switch out people on this board, this might be a good exercise to put together in an ideal scenario, what would be like our professionals to look like, right? So that is something those of us leaving could put, you know, package up for the next people.
It's a great idea. Yeah, it's just kind of a, kind of a, kind of an exit interview.
Right. So to speak. All right, so five minute recess.
Can we just wrap it up now?
Uh, well, we have, we still have updates in case anybody has-
Well, I, I can give my update.
He just needs to use the restroom really quick. Can we just do five minutes? Thanks. All right, recess, five minutes. Yeah.
File. How about those giants?
You know, that, that was the very first game that I watched and I watched it all the way to the end. But I said, I saw nothing good. Even the ones they lost, I, I felt excited. Except the one, there was the one game, I think it was the second game. I didn't feel excited at all last week. The Ringo's a tough team though. I know, knowing on stock, I got the best record, but they should have, you know, they're just was not a, not a good game. But I'm still, still there.
We gotta get rid of the general manager. We gotta get, we gotta have a whole-
I go back and forth on that and, and I hear, I hear you saying, you know? I mean, when I look at-
He's the thing that stayed constant over the last ten years of drive.
So if I look at the general manager's job, right, it's get the right people. We got Dark, we got Neighbors. Hello? Oh, hey, Dory? I think we're still live.
No, it's not. These are going to work, they're going to, all they do is amplify. Everything is off. Everything's shut down.
Can you double, double check this?
The, the volume, it's, it's off. I'm looking right at it.
I'm, I'm being told we're live.
We're.
We are up to updates, but before we do that, I just want to say thank you again to everybody here for our dialogue. I think we made good progress, I think we kind of bonded a little bit, even though, you know, sometimes we get heated, I think that's good, we need that. Our opinions are all valid, and I'm glad we were able to voice them here tonight. So, let's move into.
Agree with that, but before you move on to, from other board business.
Sure.
I just want to say I do have like a concern that our October meeting was canceled, the second meeting, our November meeting was canceled. We could have done some business, I know the Messer application we could have done in October. And there was no discussion, I guess my concern is there's no discussion by the board to say, do we want to cancel it? We have a vice chair, we have a quorum. You know, let's discuss it, let's just try to be open rather than just dictate that this is happening. So as we go forward, we can consider that.
Well, the second meeting in November was canceled because it's usually canceled for league municipalities.
We had it last year, we did not cancel it, just, I mean, you went, Mark went, but everybody else could have been here, we had a quorum.
We had no professional.
And we had a vice chair.
Because Ken was, was presenting.
Somebody.
Ken, Ken was presenting.
He would have sent, he said he would have sent somebody, but just, you know, in the future, discuss it with us, that's all.
Okay, well, I, I discussed it with Ken and he told me that he didn't have a substitute, so I, I'm sorry, I, I guess I'm getting different information.
There were things, as Rob suggested, because I know we put in an email, there were things we could do, we could talk about process and procedure and other things that we never really get an opportunity, like today, we're doing an open discussion. We could have done that on another topic, we could, you know, things that we just should be exploring.
Noted, and we can, we can bring that into next year with whoever is sitting in this chair. So moving on to updates. So Town Council, Councilman Scott, if you wouldn't mind.
Yes, uh, we're happy to, uh, happy to welcome Mike Sylvester, who was sworn in last week. And he'll be joined, he, he has joined the council, and, and that should help us a great deal.
A former planning board member.
A former planning board and zoning board member. So he'll bring a, a good perspective to the council. Right now, we're talking about a couple of things at the last meeting, we're talking about the disabled vets, tax exemption, that in the state of New Jersey, there's a law that says when a, a vet becomes one hundred percent disabled, on or about the day that that, they receive that disability, that from then on, they don't have to pay taxes on their home going forward. Sparta is one of two municipalities in the state that goes backwards and says, as of the date of your hundred percent disability, we will give you all your taxes back that you paid over the past two years. And I'm not making judgment whether that's good or bad, but what it does is it, it just blows a hole in our budget. And we've, we've, uh, had to give back some, some two hundred plus thousand dollars this year backwards. I, I, you know, and so that's what's in, in debate right now with the Town Council. The, uh, the next week, next week's Tuesday night's meeting, we will be taking, we will, we will be voting to repeal ordinances twenty-five oh seven, twenty-five oh eight, and twenty-five oh nine, which are the marijuana ordinances after the referendum that came out. Sixty-five percent voted no for cannabis stores in Sparta, and, and thirty-five percent voted yes. And hopefully the board will take action on that. And that's, that's really it right now.
Okay, um, Rob, would you mind taking on environmental?
Sure, we met, I think that meeting we met in the conference room because Town Council was going on. We discussed a little bit about what the planning board determined, uh, we talked about road salt with the upcoming storms, and, uh, we talked about impervious cover guidance, and, um, we talked about earning our bronze certification once again.
Question for you. Have you guys had any discussions surrounding Earth Day?
Yeah, but I don't have that handy, uh, I beli- I believe that we've talked about Earth Day. I'm trying to figure out if that was when we were gonna try to do a cleanup and there was discussion about LMPF doing their cleanup within Lake Mohawk. I brought up that, hey, maybe you guys, maybe we could, we could coordinate. There was some confusion that I've tried to explain that Lake Mohawk Preservation Foundation is not an only Lake Mohawk.
Organization.
Organization, yeah. Uh, and so they would probably be very happy to support the efforts here in Town Hall. I think the consensus was that they would like to hold, um, whatever they hold here. In, in this area, uh, we had tried it over by, um, the school, and then there was an accident and it was poorly attended. So, uh, planning for that, I think, is ongoing. But they don't, we talked about maybe, oh, maybe we could do the morning LMPF cleanup and then at least if we let them know what we're doing, then when people return their supplies, then they could be instructed, and now if you, if you still have some gas in the tank, go to Town Hall and proceed.
Thanks.
I have a question, do we have enough salt and sand to get us through the winter storms? Because they're predicting that it could be pretty snowy.
Well, uh, I'm glad you asked. Because I think the answer will depend who you, who you ask. Uh, I think Mr. Zep was successful in getting a salt shed, so he would probably say that they're probably well supplied with salt and they have, uh, they got good prices and they stockpiled the salt. And then the environmental would probably say, stop salting our roads, the salt levels are too high.
I think that they often oversalt, especially around.
You know what, I encourage you to join a environmental commission meeting, we're very friendly, and you could sit in there and express your concerns. I guarantee you will get some positive feedback on that commentary.
On the other, on the other side of the coin, they, they spread less in the state of New Jersey.
Overall?
New Jersey just.
Well, we save it for our bagels, for everything bagels. We save our salt for everything bagels.
Yeah, we can't hear you.
Couldn't hear it?
Yeah, Joan couldn't hear you.
Oh, okay.
We use less salt in New Jersey.
No, 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 I said the township uses less, they do use less salt on the state highways, state highways get a lot of salt. You know, so, um, but, um.
But what you could do.
To your point on, you know, worrying about salt and sand, I, I know a number of years ago, there was, there was an issue one winter, but it had to do more with a, uh, a strike in the Longshoreman or something like that down in the, you know, uh, or, or, or something down on the docks where it got unloaded. And it was, it was a statewide shortage, you know? And I, and I remember that one very well, because it was, it was actually the same year that they had the Super Bowl at Giant Stadium, and that was the other problem with it was the state grabbed a, a lot of the salt and sand to make sure that the roads around the stadium were all salted and sanded for the Super Bowl. So, um, that's the only time we were at an issue, you know, that's a long time ago.
But I would, I would encourage anyone concerned about that to check out the township website. There's information about, um, a citizen science project where you can order test strips and you can go out right after a storm or before a storm and kind of get baseline levels of how much salt is in our waterways, and then after the salting, how much flows into them, and why is this a concern?
Can I kick you into overdrive for, for minor site plan?
I'll try to keep it high level.
That works.
And I referred to, yeah.
High level and quick, it's good.
Yeah, so I, I'm just gonna cheat on my October first twenty twenty-five bullet points, thank you, Emily. So since I stepped on in January, I've observed, um, some ways in which things have done, I've learned a lot, um, to kind of the points of it takes a while for professionals to get up to speed. We're not professionals, but it takes a while for all of us to get up to speed. It takes a while for us to, um, learn to work with the supportive staff, obviously. So, uh, what, what I've gotten feedback from business owners as well as I think Planning and Zoning Office is that, we tried to, we tried to step beyond our usual just minor site plan saying yes or no, and provide a little more context, and Ron might be surprised because he said, you're not gonna be, you're gonna get burned up before he finished, you're not gonna be able to keep that up. But, um, I feel like they're more verbose, which is not surprising, but I try to restate the project scope, um, in our determinations. I try to cite all of the relevant code that we found that may apply to, um, the projects, and then I pride it, we, we then vote a determination on next steps for the applicant. So we kind of say like, this is, this is the signage concerns, these are the, uh, tenancy concerns, this is what we think you need to do, and then, you know, if you have any questions, see the office. It's not perfect, I think we're getting better, but, uh, it's difficult. The other thing that we're working on, which I know has been in ordeal, um, for, you know, those that do the hard work, but the, the minutes, um, I'm gonna lay the blame on Ron because Ron, uh, and I think, but I think rightly wanted to have a more accurate representation in the minutes with not just the topics discussed and the decisions made, but who was there involved and how did they vote? So we are catching up on our minutes with who was there and how did they vote as an additional, uh, piece of data that's now in the Minor Site Plan Subcommittee Minutes. So thanks to Planning and Zoning for doing the hard work for that.
Can I ask one question, Rob? Um, relative to the minutes for the minor site plan, will we have a year end summary?
Yeah.
Great.
I think that's a great idea.
So, Rob, can you, can you just kind of like go over what was in the year end summary, so kind of like everybody's up to speed? I know that that was a bill thing, but.
So, so what we were using, there was, there was a spreadsheet, and it's, it's, it's morphed constantly. Um, and everyone had different views of it, so basically it was a listing of every application that came in, when it came in, when it was decided, what was being requested. And, and, and at one point, we had everyone, what was everyone's vote. I'm trying to think what else was there, Rob, can you think?
Sometimes we ask an applicant to resubmit or refine, so that's been captured.
It was a narrative, kind of a, of key events and stuff.
So, I mean, aside, these minutes would be very difficult, um, and we've changed depending on like how we've met. We've met virtually, and I think that was a carryover from COVID maybe, um, before my time. Uh, but then if it's inconvenient or to try to get quorum, it's, it's over email. We would never be able to produce minutes that are six pages or a hundred and fifty pages long, and no one would want to read that. But we try to capture the important points, who was there? What, uh, what the project was, um, what the application number was, when was it, when was it received? When was it determined on? What was the determination and who voted how, right? Joan, I don't know.
Yeah, and, and Ron's familiar with that spreadsheet, we were kind of working on it. I think, um, if I'm guessing what your question is, it, um, you haven't seen it. So we were asking that we start to do it with the minutes, and I know Dory did it with the July minutes. So it was in that packet, but we wanted, we should get to the point where it is in every single month. So yes, we'll do a year end, there should have been a year end, I think for December twenty twenty-four. There should be one for twenty twenty-five, and then we should be able to incorporate it monthly, you know, going forward with the set of minutes with the planning board.
Master Plan Subcommittee, our next meeting is on December eighth, um, that's Monday evening. We'll be fine tuning, um, some of the discrepancies in, um, the, the presenting of the update for the, um, stakeholder meetings, um, and, and the responses that we got. Also, we're going to be moving into, uh, get, doing a deeper dive on the goals and objectives. For the master plan, we'll be getting an update at that point on where certain, um, key points are, how far, um, the work is progressed to date. the work is progressed to date, and, um, that's pretty much where we are at that point, and the, uh, intended presentation of the stakeholder subcommittee, I'm sorry, of the stakeholder meetings, not just the large scale, but all of them, is intended to be, uh, was intended to be today, but as mentioned earlier, it'll be, um, at our December 17th meeting, um, or that's the target date currently. And that's it. That's all I have. So, Ernie, you're on.
You have to open to the public.
Oh, sorry, you're right. We open to the public. I apologize. Jenny, I apologize. We are going to open to the public.
I only have one thing, and I'm just speaking as the public, not as tapping to Sparta. I appreciate the robust conversation about the RFP process and everybody's opinions. I'd like to give you one from the cheap seats out here. Uh, the three to five-year, I agree, Ron, is probably the most responsible thing to do. Having said that, the engineer hasn't been, had an RFP for years, and if there was one, I believe there may have been one at the same time, but that they did one for the attorney in '23, there were no other applicants similarly, uh, to the circumstances that the planning board faced at the time for the attorney. So, um, I would ask that maybe that's considered for next year.
Absolutely. Okay. Apologies for for not going to the public originally, but now?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.